Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this evening's regular session of council for June the 14th, 2022. This evening, we have two of our councillors joining us over Zoom. Councillor Richardson and Councillor Norrie. If you wish to follow this meeting with the agenda, it is available on the town's website at greaternapony.com. Also, you of course can watch the meeting live or watch it later on on the town's YouTube channel. If at any time we lose connection with either one of our members coming in by Zoom, we will wait five minutes, we'll adjourn for five minutes until they can reconnect. If the reconnection is not possible, depending on quorum, we will continue with the meeting. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. I look for an adoption of the motion for adoption of the agenda. We do have two amendments this evening. Please remove the presentations 4.1 and 4.2. Ms. Lloyd has had some technical problems getting here. She was coming from teaching in Cornwall and has had some car problems, so we'll get her rescheduled to come in. Also, if you would add to closed session, that we will also be discussing matters related to personal information about identifiable individuals within closed session. I would look for a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Councillor McCormack, seconded by Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none. There are no presentations this evening. There are no deputations this evening. We, I would look for a motion as well to adopt the minutes for the regular session of council for May 24th as presented, please. Councillor Richardson. Councillor Pennell, did I see your hand up? Any further comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. I'm going to feel like my head's spinning by the time of the night. I'm just trying to remember to check the screen before there are two councillors coming in. 7.1, correspondence for information. You have correspondence for information for items dated June the 14th, 2022. You do have a recommendation before you, councillor's wishes. Moved by Deputy, moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Councillor McCormack. Anything that you're looking to separate or speak to? Seeing none, all in favor of the adoption? Carried. Any unfinished business? There is no correspondence for action this evening. Committee reports, 9.1, municipal heritage committee minutes, May the 19th. You do have a recommendation that the municipal heritage committee minutes dated May 19th be received. Moved by Councillor Richardson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Any comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. 9.2, there is a correction in this. The address, although it's correct in mine, is 9190, not 190, Highway 33. Am I correct with that? Yeah, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm not sure who is speaking to this tonight. Is it Mr. Zatterberg that's speaking to? Nope. So, you do have a recommendation before you to receive and approve the recommendation coming forth from the committee to amend township of South Fredericksburg bylaw number 83-80, being a bylaw to designate the property known municipally as the Crowell Barn at Lot 7, concession one. Additional are our one bath as being of architectural and historical value and interest under part four of the previous, sorry, of the Ontario Heritage Act in accordance with the recommendation previously made in 2016. And further, the council instruct the clerk to proceed with the required public notice, following which the bylaw amendment shall be brought forward to council. Moving recommend, okay?
I had a question.
Okay, then, fine. Go ahead, please, Deputy Mayor.
A few years ago, we had a situation where a property that had been designated was requested to be undesignated by the owners because of the insurance implications that they were experiencing. So my question is, has the owner of the property been duly consulted and are they in a understanding and agreement with the process that, and how it will affect their ownership? And I see Terry's hand at the screen.
Yeah, go ahead, Councillor Richardson, please.
Thank you, Worship, and thank you, Deputy. I'll just give you some, some background information on this. What's happened is, is this property with the barn is still going to remain designated. Back in 2015 or 2016, the property with the barn was severed by a previous, by the previous council. And, and so what they're looking to do is get rid of the designation on the severed piece of property. Once again, this is, had already gone through the previous heritage committee and also the property has already been severed. So we're not, we wouldn't be asking for the heritage designation to be removed from the property with the barn. It's simply a vacant lot that was part of the property. And when they designated the barn, the property, they designated the whole property. But this has already been, I get, for better lack of word, investigated or looked at by the previous council and for, for reasons unbeknownst to me or any of us, it just, it would appear as it was heading in that direction and then it just fell through the, through the cracks. So it's not about undesignating a piece of property that has some heritage designation on it. It's basically a vacant lot that still had the designation because it'd been severed, so.
Okay, I'm satisfied, yep.
Go ahead, Councillor McCormack.
Thank you, Worship. This is an email that I received 20 minutes ago. And it says, is this the property that's across from 33 Vines? So I'm getting head nods. So if that's the case, the email says I'm somewhat surprised that this barn would be considered historically significant. It is certainly distinctive, however, unless there's much about the history of the property and building that I'm not aware of. And perhaps there is, however, here is my knowledge of the barn and property. A relative of this person's wife's family, Frank Cowell, bought that property in either the late 70s or early 80s and subsequently built the current house and the distinctive barn. My in-laws and I watched the construction of both during our travels from whatever. And so the history of the barn would only go back to early to mid 80s. And I'm going on here. I'm not objecting to tonight's agenda. I'm curious as, curious in a tad, bewildered about the barn being considered historical. Not saying no to it, just some comments that I wanted to read. So I don't know any more about it than that, just passing it on. Thank you.
No, thank you. Go ahead, Councillor Richardson.
Thank you, Worship. Yes, I mean, the, the property with the barn had been designated prior to this term of council, so. And, and if, I suppose, the people that own the barn and the property that the barn sits on want to undesignate it, then that could be forwarded to the heritage committee. But that's not the case with this going on tonight. What's going on tonight is the severed piece of property from the original property with the barn still had the designation on that piece of property. And so that's, they just wanted, the owners wanted that designation removed from basically a vacant piece of property. And whether there's a house on there or not, at this point, I don't know. But it really has nothing to do with the barn and the property that the barn is on per se, other than the fact that the piece of property that was severed off it still had the designation on it from when the barn and the property the barn was on was designated.
Thank you. I, I'm going to speak to this because I, I don't think I was on the heritage committee, but I do remember it, it coming. But this barn is certainly a lot older than 1980 because the designation was in 1980. This is one of probably our featured historic barns in the area. There would be within the heritage committee designations, there would be a complete write-up of as to what architectural features, why, when it was built, who it was built by, what it was used for. What I would recommend is, is, and this is on my part, because I think that this got slowed up, Councillor Richardson, because we have had a couple of properties that severances have been taken off and then they had to decide whether, sorry, whether the designation was carried over onto the original lot. And that caused some, some problems with then, were we requiring or would we ever require an infill bylaw? And I'm not recommending that. So that something that was beside a very historic house would not be really out of character with the whole and entire thing. My recommendation would be, we, we take a, a deeper look at this. I, I can see that there is some confusion on what the designation actually is and why it's there, but it's certainly available in the records.
Yep, Your Worship.
Just, just a second. Councillor McCormack is going to speak first. Councillor Richardson.
Well, thank you, Worship. So I, I just suggest possibly that we should be prudent and just have one more look at it and then bring it back to later date if, if that's agreeable. Thank you.
I think so too. Go ahead, Councillor Richardson.
If, if, maybe the clerk can help us with this, and maybe it's in the report. If the original severances and the original designation could be pulled off, it would probably help. But like I say, it's not about undesignating the barn or that property. It's about designating a piece of property that had been severed from that property. And so if we pulled off the severances and stuff, it, it may help put people's mind at ease. But we're not sure why it didn't get authorized or, or rectified from the previous. There was no indication that I remember seeing or hearing as to why it didn't get brought back to the previous council. But maybe if, if we could find, if there's any information there, but that we weren't privy to, we can bring that up, just to put people's mind at ease.
Certainly, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Through Your Worship, my apologies if this wasn't clear enough in this report. There is a link in the report on this agenda back to the initial August 16th, 2016 report, which does have the full text of that proposed bylaw from 2016, which includes the full description of the historical value of the property, including the construction date in 1862. And I apologize that that wasn't included as a full attachment instead of as a hyperlink, which maybe led to some of the confusion here.
So councillor's wishes on, on this? Sorry, go ahead, Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question. I understand what you're saying about doing further investigation and making sure that the property boundaries are clear and recognizing that if something is built next to it, it should keep, perhaps be in keeping with the heritage of the original property. But my question is, if we, once we get through that process, what are the next steps for removing the heritage designation from the severed piece of property that currently does not have a building on it?
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Through Your Worship, if council were to pass this resolution, because the changes are under the Heritage Act considered minor, we are correcting a legal description and updating the description of why this property was designated as a heritage property. The process is that first we notify the landowner. They have 30 days to file an objection. And if they don't, then the bylaw is passed and then we do another 30-day notice. We file it with the registry office and there is a 30-day appeal window on that bylaw. And then, again, if there are no objections, then the matter is updated and the designation is taken off that severed vacant lot and put on the updated new legal description of the property at 9190, Highway 33.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor.
Thank you. That's very clear.
Okay. Go ahead, Councillor McCormack.
Thank you, Worship. Nonetheless, I would like to be able to have a better look at the, the link that the clerk is talking about and not, not do that this evening. I don't believe there's any urgency in doing this right now and it could be postponed until the next meeting.
Okay. So the instruction, you do that by resolution, that more, more time to investigate the report on it, to be brought forward at the next meeting? Moved by Councillor McCormack, seconded by Deputy Mayor Kaiser? And we'll have another one coming forward as well because there's another, oh, no, it was de-designated, so it's okay. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Staff reports, Legislative Services, Short Term Accommodations, Bylaw Update. You do have a recommendation before you. Madam Clerk, would you like to speak to this?
Through Your Worship, I can speak to this or Aggie Hill is also in attendance this evening to respond to questions.
Thanks, Aggie. I saw you walk in, but you disappeared to the press table. Okay, Aggie, I'll let you go ahead with some preamble and then be ready for questions, please.
I don't have anything special to add, Your Worship.
Can you make sure, Aggie, that you're speaking right into the mic so the people at home? Thank you.
Is this better?
Is that better?
I think so.
Okay.
I have nothing additional to add, Your Worship, but I'm available for questions.
Okay. Questions, councillor? Are you having problems with, with your agenda?
Technical difficulties. We're just in the process of trying to get my iPad up to speed again.
Okay. Well, just take a, a short five-minute recess to make sure that Councillor McCormack can... Okay. Councillor Richardson and Councillor Norrie, you can hear us again? Good, thank you. So questions, questions for Aggie on the STA bylaw update? So, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
So I read through the report and I thank you for that. I get the logic behind waiting for a threshold, 100 seems reasonable of that many properties. My concern is that there may be more than, than we think there is based on the, the survey technique. And I, I've spent some time in the last couple of weeks in other communities and I've talked to people in other communities. This, actually, I returned today from Tovemori and in the municipality of, I don't know, it's called Upper Gray or something, they have over 1,000 STAs. And when they put in a registration bylaw similar to one we were discussing earlier, they now have 175 registered. That means there's still 825 operating without registering. And the point is that the locals have a real problem with them and it continues because there's a lack of respect for the rules by the guests of these and the hosts are largely absent. And we've seen some other stories. Councillor McCormack shared one this weekend from other municipalities that have seen different responses, different approaches. If we can deal with the nuisance complaints with the current bylaws, and in the report it says, making them more robust or whatever the words were, to enhance the enforcement, I still think that maybe the key detail is personnel in terms of if I, as a resident, have a problem with the STA operating next door and it's 11:30 at night and they're blaring their music or whatever they're doing, who, who's going to answer the phone 11:30 at night? Because the OPP might, but they might not respond to it. And these are the kind of comments I'm hearing from other communities where when they make the call, if bylaw's not operating at those hours, they call 911. 911 has bigger fish to fry and aren't really that concerned about that. There was one instance of a fire being set and the neighboring property, the permanent resident, was a volunteer firefighter who had to go next door and put out the fire that was left unattended by the guests. And these are the kind of stories that go on and on. So I'm fine with maintaining the existing bylaws if they're adequate to, to, to regulate the activities, but the key point is connectivity to the personnel to, can actually provide the enforcement when the enforcement needs to happen, not, and with all due respect to everybody, but if, if, if nobody's going to answer the phone until the next day and the problem's resolved itself, that didn't help anybody. And then there's no follow-up or, or recognition by the owner who's doing the STA to, to make sure that problem doesn't come back at a future renting or whatever. So that's my only concern and I just wanted to voice that out loud.
Councillor McCormack? And then I'll go to you, Councillor Richardson.
Thank you, Worship. Exactly what Deputy Mayor Kaiser said. I know of one in particular that Mr. Nobes and I were involved in a couple of years ago, pre-pandemic, and it's just getting worse. So this is a property that's on the shoreline and now has three rental forms of buildings. Some are not really buildings, but structures. And not only are the renters upset because they answer an ad online and then they show up and realize that I'm in this place, but then there's somebody else in, in that place 20 paces away and then just up the road, there's another accommodation and there's other people there. And then the legitimate owners of the property next door have to put up with this every summer with all the nonsense and anyway, so I'm, I'm really adamant that, you know, we, we go ahead with a bylaw that's, that's going to be efficient and that's going to have some teeth in it. So I'll wait for more comments, but I know what my recommendation's going to be this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to you now, Councillor Richardson, please.
Thank you, Worship. We're nearing probably two years in the making with this first rear of Ted. And we, I know that when first rear of Ted, we wanted to get ahead of the curve. We're not doing that. I mean, I'm going to cut to the chase with respect to the report. I would suggest we go with option number three and option B and start this, the ball, get the ball rolling on this. I, I agree with the deputy and Councillor McCormack in the fact that it suggests that there's 60. I'm going to suggest probably there's far more than 60. We're not looking at, at, at completely outlawing these places. All we want to do is regulate them. We want to make sure the septic systems, we want to make sure the roads going in, we want to make sure there's rules that are involved with, with respect to these Airbnbs. And, and, you know, it, it, it really isn't that difficult. So my recommendation is to, to implement the STA licensing program, strengthen the existing property regulation bylaws, and then to have two flag rate fees, differentiating, differentiating, differentiating the fees based on the types of STAs. We know it's going to take more manpower. We, we know that our bylaw, we're probably going to end up at some point and probably in the very near future, have two full-time bylaw people as opposed to a, a, a full-time bylaw and a part-time bylaw. I know that when we, we hired our septic inspection folks, that there wasn't quite a full-time position there, but we were going to fill some spots in there and maybe this will be looked. So we want to get ahead of the curve on this. Like I say, all we want to do is regulate it. The longer things go unregulated, the worse they're going to get. And, and we maybe have the opportunity to get ahead of part of the curve on this and maybe we've been saved by part of the curve with respect to what's been going on with real estate lately. But I, I don't think we can drag our feet on this any longer, so that would be my recommendation.
Mr. Princeton, did you wish to speak to this?
If I may, Your Worship, we're happy, as staff have presented several options here. What I would recommend that if, if council was to endorse proceeding with a policy or a bylaw around STAs, that staff would come back and ex-council and clearly indicate in terms of what resource, what resources that would cost in terms of personnel and other fees and other costs.
Councillor McCormack?
Thank you, Worship. That's fine. I have no, no problem with that. But I'm really hoping we can get to, to an agreement on this. And my thought from the beginning was it's a $100 registration fee as an example, nothing out of line, but a strong penalty for not registering with, within a certain amount of time. I think it's important for the municipality to know who's out there, how many, where they are, so we have some information to be able to develop as we go along. Right now, we have nothing recorded. We're just going word of mouth and all that. So happy to wait for another report, but hopefully by then we can make a decision because right now I would second option three and, and option B. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. My thoughts on this were that throughout the report, one of the first points raised is providing stronger bylaws. And I think we need to set that in place first as to how, which bylaws are going to be enforced and who's going to enforce them. And I agree with what Councillor McCormick just said, the program will not work unless there's penalties. We clearly saw that in managing the parking at the boat launch. So I was surprised when the deputy mayor said in the community he was in, so few people were participating. But if we're going to penalize the ones who don't participate, who's going to find them and manage that? For anyone who operates an Airbnb, if you can say we're, we are approved by the community, we have cleanliness standards, we have sufficient water and sewage, this is a big bonus. This sets you apart from your competitors. I think the question of managing this and applying penalties is going to be larger than we are thinking of initially. And I would like to see all those building blocks in place before we take that step. But I agree, we need to move forward and work towards that.
Councillor Pennell?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just have some comments on this. So really by putting any type of monetary figure towards this, it's not going to take care of nearly the costs associated to run this project. My main concerns are on this is that, that whoever's renting the place abides by the fire bans they're on and annoys nuisance because we all know what happens at the middle of night. And then, so we have a problem. So we can build up our bylaws, we can make them stronger, we can do whatever, but we need to have the ability to enforce those bylaws at the time that they're happening. And that's not going to be between nine and five. So it's going to be at night, it's going to be after hours. So we'd have to make sure that the OPP will, will, will go by our bylaws and enforce our bylaws or have staff, have bylaw staff that's going to work those hours for us. That's the concerns that we're really looking after here on this. Am I concerned about a septic? You know, if, if there's three bedrooms, is the septic going to hold it? That's, at the end of the day, it's going to be the problem of whoever owns that cottage, if that septic system's overworked, that person's going to have to pay serious dollars to fix that because really, again, if it's rented out to, to three or four people per bedroom or whatever and that's, and we pass saying that that septic system's great for doing this, when there's 10 people there at 2:00 in the morning using that wash, it's, it's too late at that time. So what are we really trying to get at here? I'm really trying to think, put my head around this, and I'm thinking that it's, it's to protect the landowners that are around these short-term accommodations. And I think that's what we should be paying attention to. And I think that's what we should be paying attention to.
Go ahead, Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, Worship. Just, we're not going to require people to work twenty-four hours a day. I mean, the complaint comes in, you've got a witness. The witness can give the evidence as to what's going on, when it's going on, how it's going on. I don't think that's an issue. It's really very simple one-on-one stuff that charges can be laid, charges can be processed, and if the noise is too extreme, the OPP is going to go and deal with it with respect to a mischief charge. So it really, we don't need somebody working twenty-four hours a day. We just have to ensure that we have the people, the bylaw enforcement, the septic people, that they can do the inspection because the inspection of the septic is important. The fact that a lot of these, and I'll use Ward Two as an example, a lot of the properties there are seasonal properties that don't have the same, with respect to septic systems that the houses do. And when you have a thousand square foot seasonal property that is trying to house four, five, six, eight adults, Counselor Pennell is right that it puts strain on a system that wasn't designed, not to mention all the private roads that are going into all these places, which are the responsibility of the landowners that live on the private roads. So, but with respect to the bylaw stuff, that can be followed up the next day on a complaint with respect to witness statements and stuff like that. So I don't see that big a problem, but we got to get the, we got to get the process, the ball rolling. Like I say, we've been at this for an awful long period of time, trying to get ahead of the curve, and we're not going to get ahead of the curve if we keep bouncing it around. So, thank you.
Counselor McCormack.
Thank you, Worship. One last point. I think we have a responsibility to our residents to do something because if you are living next door to one of these short-term rentals and it's not being, there's no enforcement, nobody's following up, in a lot of cases, it's corporations that are buying the operations and they couldn't care less about the neighbors or the noise level or whatnot. So I'm sorry, as Counselor Richardson pointed out, and I remember Counselor Norrie in the beginning of this term saying, why don't you just take Prince Edward County, do a cut and paste, and there you've got a bylaw and we'll work on it later. So with two and a half, three years, we've been going at this, and I think we just need to bite the bullet and do what's, what is right at this time, have a basic program in place that we can massage as we go along. So I'm happy to wait until the next meeting to get more information as to what's recommended for fees and whatnot, but I'm going to stand pretty pat on this that I really want to see us have a bylaw in place.
So what's your motion then?
My motion is that we adopt option three with option B and proceed with that and have staff come back with recommendations for fee structure and whatever else we need for information as to additional personnel and cost evaluations and that kind of affair. Thank you.
Okay. Did you get that? Madam Clerk, do I have a second here for that? Deputy Mayor Kaiser, any further, was that for a question or? No, okay. Any further comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained? All in favor and abstaining, it is carried. Thank you. Ten point two, Legislative Services Tile Drainage Loan Program. Madam Clerk, do you wish to speak to this? Thanks, Aggie.
Thanks, Your Worship. I don't have anything else to add to this report, but I can take any questions.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser.
It's not a question, it's more of a comment. I think it's pretty simple. We have a provincially delivered program. In this community, agriculture is one of the largest, if not the largest, industry by economic contribution. So we, I think, have a responsibility to support and facilitate the delivery of the program. And on the second part, the, oh, there was a question in there about the fees. It's a nominal fee. If it can be captured in the loan, then it's not really, I think it's pretty incidental, one hundred to three hundred, whatever is appropriate. If we're in that ballpark of less than half a thousand, I think we're fine.
Any other comments before I look for a motion and resolution to push this forward if that's council's wishes? Okay.
It's all moved.
Did you get what you needed? Oh, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting to look there. Counselor Richardson.
No, thank you, Worship. I agree with the deputy. I just, I just trying to get my head around this is that it's not our money, we're not authorizing a loan. What is our, so to best describe it is our involvement is to look after our agricultural community or to make sure that our agricultural community can get to the table with this? Is that, because I don't see any other benefits to it and become, other than become the middleman. And I think it's very important that we do if that's what the case is. And so I'm just trying to look, maybe Max can explain it better to me, so.
It's, yeah, I can't, thank you.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
It's simply to provide a local input to the provincial program. So the municipality is deliver it, but it's provincial program. So the money is outlaid and recovered, I think, from the province later. But it's basically a guarantee that it's paid by the province. The province is guaranteeing the loan. The farmer still has to pay the loan. It's not a grant, it's a loan, but it just is giving that local delivery of the provincial program, especially in the absence of a whole lot of regional offices that used to be and haven't been for decades now.
No, no, that's all I was looking for before deputy is just, how, what are we going to gain from it? And I agree with you, is that we, it gives us the opportunity of keeping our hands on it, I guess for the better lack of words. So I'll second that if you've already got the motion, Worship.
Okay. Mover and seconder by Counselor Richardson. And am I correct that this is good land stewardship as well? Certainly for runoff and so on of nutrients, is this not the best way to help the farmers handle it?
I'm trying to think of the simplest and most concise way to say it, but basically it makes all lands more reliably available to crop on a more reliable basis. And especially when we see so much urban sprawl that consumes more and more farmland all the time across the province, but specifically in the GTA, and that's why the green belt was created. But yeah, it just makes lesser quality lands more reliably available.
Okay. So go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, Worship. Just also in the report, it states here that the payments are done through the annual tax bills of the owner.
So, yeah, so there is some work on our part, too. So you have a mover and a seconder. Madam Clerk, you have the wording that you need. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Community and Corporate Services. Bylaw to regulate the operation of municipally-owned cemeteries. Mr. Zatterberg.
Available to answer any questions you may have.
Here's your, we certainly are getting questions from the public, so here's your chance for input and questions from all the work that the staff has been doing to bring this report forward.
I have a little, I have a little question. In the report, it refers to, sorry, I've lost the number, but there was a number of inactive cemeteries or, I don't, that's not the right word, thirty-six or something? Anyways, who actually cares for those cemeteries in terms of doing the groundskeeping, the lawn mowing? Are they still largely volunteer-based or is the town assuming any of that, sort of just the surface maintenance, the grass cutting?
Of, Your Worship, of that number, I believe it's seventeen that the town looks after at this point. So if they're deemed abandoned by the owner, then the town's obligated to look after them.
Okay.
Active or inactive?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any other questions? You do have a recommendation before you, council's wishes on this. Counselor Johnson?
Move staff recommendation, please, Mayor.
Okay. And Counselor Norrie, you were seconding that? Yep. Any further comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thanks very much. Mr. Zatterberg, that's been a lot of work to bring that together. Ten point four, Growth and Expansion, PLA CO 2022-033, A Brown Palace Road Rezoning Report. Michael, do you have anything to add to this report?
Your Worship, nothing further to add. This proposal was before the committee of adjustment previously, provisional approval was granted for the creation of two lots on Palace Road. The lands were zoned rural and the proposal was to zone them residential type one to facilitate the severances. There was discussion at that time about the potential for the water and sewer services servicing the retained lands, potentially crossing the, one of the severed parcels. It has been confirmed that the existing services do not, so there's no need for relocation of the services, just so the committees are aware.
Comments or questions for Michael on this, this report to move it forward? Moving staff recommendation, Counselor McCormack, seconded by Counselor Johnson. If there are no further comments or questions, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Infrastructure Services, 2022 Fleet Rationalization. You do have a correction on slide sixteen. I'm not sure whether the public is seeing that the, sorry, the correction, but it is one hundred and fifty thousand as opposed to one point five million. Okay? Welcome, Peter. I'll let you go ahead with this and then I'm sure that you'll be ready to answer any questions that we may have.
Thank you, Worship. I'll just go through and kind of present the CO's notes, so I won't read this word for word as we go through. So basically, the purpose of the presentation is just to review our current inventory and functional use. We want to identify some trends that are quite interesting and then discuss some challenges and some opportunities for improvement moving forward. With respect to vehicle class, there's just a short description of what vehicles we have in our fleet. The actual current fleet inventory hosts a total of sixty-four vehicles. On the, on the next two slides, you'll see there's a breakdown of a total of forty-two light fleet. I will, I will draw attention to a couple of things, like when you look at the average, average year in service of our vehicles. So we did replace a total of nine vehicles in the last two years. So that's twenty-one percent of that list was renewed within the last two years and our average age of our vehicles is still at six years, so it's high. You know, if we would have presented this report to you a year ago, it would have been much higher. We just recently disposed of a truck that was a nineteen ninety-seven, which is pretty much unheard of in the municipal world. Looking at historical fleet and trends, I'll just draw attention to a couple of things in there. So you can see that our inventory has ranged between sixty and the current sixty-four vehicles in total. There were a couple increases in a couple of the different departments based on the service level increases. One thing I'd like to draw to your attention is, you know, the single axle trucks, the one truck that we want to hold for redundancy in public works, we actually had at least a single axle truck last winter just to get through from Lyles Township. So it was, it was a tough year for public works with respect to not having the appropriate resources at the fingertips to do the job. And I guess the last takeaway in this slide, you know, the picture, the Band-Aid says it all, you know, we don't, currently do not have all of our heavy equipment in our fleet funding model. And when we get, it's a working document, and when we get it all in there, we don't have the funding to support it all. So I guess that the whole purpose of this presentation is to show some opportunities for improvement where we can get some savings because there's a few challenges we'll have to address in the future. With respect to functional use, I'll just draw attention to two of the boxes here. Services provided. For those who don't know, there's, we provide a twenty-four hour service in three different departments, and then there's a limited twenty-four hour support in facilities as well. So the hundred dollar question, you know, after hour use of vehicles, of corporate vehicles, three total. So there's one from emergency services, one from public works, and one from utilities. They go to an on-call operator, whoever's on call, and that will rotate based on who the person is. Some of the seasonal fluctuations and challenging, or challenges, rather, you can appreciate when you see the total number of our fleet and then you look at the total bodies that are out in the fields doing the work. So, you know, just even the first bullet alone where you look, there's twenty-four additional summer staff employed by the town this year. So of those, of those twenty-four, the bulk of those students are all in the field working, right? So it does become a challenge to provide the right, the right number and the right type of fleet for the requirements. With respect to peak demands, you know, the peak is pretty much the same in all departments. It's, you know, it's the summer season. So historically, we held on to fleet that was scheduled for disposal. We'd let, we would use it to help bolster our fleet during the summer months and then dispose it year-end, but that did have some challenges with it with respect to having the right functional vehicle, so. We are starting to see on a more frequent basis, we're having challenges with productivity based on fleet. So, you know, there are incidents where service is slightly delayed because there isn't a vehicle readily available, or there may be some, and I've seen ones such as a crew cab with four people attend to do a task that is a one-staffed person job, right? So that's not very productive, but based on how time-sensitive it was, it's something that needed to be done, so we had to work within the limitations. With respect to trends, there's no scale to this, but I'll discuss it a little further in, but you can see that we've had pretty minor adjustments in fleet. We've had some staffing increases, but there's slides a little further that we'll get to. You can see our service levels, they're climbing quick. And, you know, those two, those three trends typically are going to run parallel versus in opposite directions. Maintenance and fuel costs and what we're expecting to see, you can see it a bit in facilities and public works. Those two departments have been hit particularly hard with service level increases. You're going to start to see a lot of increased fuel and maintenance costs. A lot of the maintenance costs are based on extra usage and older equipment, so. You can see that in the overall trend where it's in all departments. You can see the fuel costs. Maintenance hasn't started climbing at a steep degree yet, but it's not, it won't be far behind, so. Service level increases, you can, you can see there's quite a list of things that we've accumulated with respect to service level increases over the last five years, and staff have done their best, but we're starting to see some challenges that we're having with respect to fleet. So in, during that review, we looked at, you know, with, to address things like productivity, what does it take? The bottom line is we're about three fleet short at times, but there are other opportunities where, you know, when we look at with the potential of shared administration buildings and stuff like that, where we may be able to enhance pool vehicles. So it may be a net zero, but that's yet to be determined, so. The next slide's about funding models. That's where the correction was made there. There was a typo to a magnitude of ten on that. But the, basically the bottom line here is what we're looking for, you'll see at a future council meeting, you'll see a presentation from Enterprise that they'll bring some numbers to the table that shows we can probably, that we can, not probably, we can operate at savings, but also there's a whole bunch of spinoffs that come with that. So, you know, we could drive, instead of driving around in fleet that's, you know, I'm showing you a base case scenario at six where maybe low likelihood is much higher normally, our mechanics are saddled with considerable work and it's taking their precious time away from our heavier fleet and some of the more challenging equipment. And, you know, with having that older fleet, you're going to have the downtime, right? So the presentation that you'll see in the upcoming weeks will have a significant amount of benefits and opportunities for us to look at. With respect to opportunities for improvement, so there's approximately ten on there, and they're fairly significant, and it kind of balances the first part of the presentation, you know, the balancing of requirements, you know, and at the end of the day, we're looking to find overall cost savings and a better way to do things because, you know, the, you know, the trends of the day are, you know, we need to find a way to do more with less because it's not easy to find the money. So that's what we're looking to do is to optimize this process. we're looking to do is to optimize this process.
Can we take the presentation down? Thank you, Peter. I, I just need to be able to see the two councillors that are coming in there. They don't have to text me if they want to speak then. Questions to Peter? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Kaiser.
Thank you, worship. Peter, can you talk for a minute how this might help us with availability of vehicles? And what I'm talking about more specifically on the heavy stuff, you know, we're hearing comments that the plow trucks are up to two years away from the date of order. Certainly, they've been over a year for some time. Even light vehicles, you know, ordering vehicles right now with chip shortages and stuff, which hopefully is a blip, which will come back in, you know, in a not-too-distant future, but we're months away. Will leasing help in that way by giving us more predictable order windows that we can anticipate sooner, that, that, you know, it's going to be needed every year kind of thing? So can you talk about that as far as the availability to vehicles to replace and have on hand?
Through your worship, I'll start with the light side and then jump to the heavy. So the light side, currently, we were, vehicles scheduled for disposal were held on to. They may not meet the functional use or the number that's needed for the, for the season, but we're pretty limited on what we can do, so we have to make do with that. The, through Enterprise, you know, we, you don't have to, you don't have to lease something for an entire duration, like one year plus. You, you can do short terms, right? So if, if we find that we need a light fleet, like, like a half-ton truck, where there's several we need, but we only need them for five months a year, and that's it, they can, they can accommodate that. So that, that's, that's a, a shot of relief on the, on the light fleet side. The heavy fleet side, that, none of those heavy fleet were included in those 42 vehicles. So that was just the, all the lighter fleet. But the, but the heavy equipment, yes, you're correct, are longer lead times, but there's other ways to procure as well. So there's a procurement system called Canoe that the staff are reviewing, where everything's already, there's already, you know, specs that are very commonly used across the province. So it's just a matter of municipality knowing when they want it, work the dates backwards, go through a slightly different procurement process. And they, they, they have, you know, it's provincially-wide buying power, so you usually get a really good deal on those things. So I think the heavy side is just us being a little bit more proactive and ordering ahead of time.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilor McCormack.
Thank you, worship. Peter, just draw your attention to the rise in cost of fuel. I'm surprised that it's not higher than that on the chart, but I guess, just going back to the graph there, I believe, I believe these are the numbers. I'm just surprised that it wasn't higher.
Yeah, through your worship, we did have, there was, remember the gas prices when, you know, when COVID was in its early stages, were very cheap. So, you know, so we're seeing the, the recent escalating costs. So if I show you this, these graphs, 12 months from now, they're going to be what you would probably expect to see tonight.
Yeah, sure. And I used to be extremely well-versed in commercial leasing, but I haven't repaid much attention to it. But Enterprise is one company. There must be other companies that are doing that.
Through, through your worship, I'm, I'm not the most knowledgeable to speak on that question, but through LAS, they're a record of vendor. I believe they're, I don't know if there's any competing partners to that or not. Perhaps the CEO can provide more information on that.
So I could, thank you, Peter. I can speak to that, Councilor McCormack. So they've approached us, they are a vendor of records through the province of Ontario, so there's no requirement to actually compete it. But based on their presentation, based on the other municipalities that they have entered into agreement with, one being Loyalist down the road, but there, there's many more. Given what they do, I don't think there's a requirement to go and compete it, especially given, they are actually, I think, they say, the largest procurer of light vehicles in North America.
Okay.
So I think they're there in terms of what, what they can do in the industry, and we feel that there's very good value for that.
Well, I'm, I'm, I've always been big on leasing. It frees up cash and has other benefits, plus the maintenance savings are, are fairly large when you're always running fairly new vehicles. What do you do for vehicle identification when you're calling up a vehicle for a short period of time, like three months, let's say?
Could I, could I just jump ahead? Just on point of clarification, there are some leasing aspects to it, but this is not a leasing program per se. There are some instances where we will outright buy vehicles and then sell them. But that will all be managed through Enterprise Fleet Management Program. So there is some purchasing involved here.
Okay. I guess I'll leave it at that for now. But if you do get a vehicle, however you, you get it, and it's used for three months, how do you go about identifying the vehicle from the town logo? Is that something that?
Through your worship, so they, the services that they provide for us, very small fee. So if, if it's a vehicle that's being changed out every two to five years, they outfit it. So they take all of our original equipment off our one vehicle, install it on the next, and they can do loading as well. So it's the only challenge there. The only thing they wouldn't, we'd have to provide them with an actual numbering system, but other than that, they're fully capable of doing all the rest and taking that off of staff's hands.
All right. Thank you.
Anything further from council? Thanks, Peter. You do have a recommendation? Oh, I'm sorry. I can, I can, can't seem to get past there. Sorry about that, Councilor Penau. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through your worship, Peter, could you just remind us again, please? Like I see on page six, page six, that there's 12 vehicles under five years old, and at page seven, there's seven vehicles under five years old, light, light fleet. What, what would be your typical, say, for an escape? How long we would hold on to something like that?
So through, through your worship on slide, historically, we were running on provincial numbers. So the, so in the very, where it says opportunities for improvement, second last slide, you'll see down there where you'll see the industry standards. So they were the numbers that we had previously tried to use. You know, worked effectively for some, not so much for others. But you can see that, you know, the small fleet, you know, like a small SUV car, nine years, light fleet, so that's half, that's a half, up to a half ton, 11 years, medium, so you're looking at three-quarter ton and up. And then the head of the fire-heavy fleet was at the 20-year mark, and then like a dump truck would be around the 14-year. There were the targets. We often exceeded those.
We did, eh? Okay. No, I, I saw them there, but I, but I guess maybe my question was, what do we do? And that's, so we exceed them, do we? On that, okay. So I, I guess my other questions would, would just be held for whenever we do have a presentation from Enterprise. And do we know when, when to expect that to hit our, our desk? Our next meeting? Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Previously, we were advised that it is not beneficial to the town to have staff use your own vehicles and be reimbursed on a per-kilometer usage basis. Part of that was because of the insurance liabilities. Is that situation still true, or is that changing, or is that something that's on the table to be investigated as part of this process?
Through your worship, using, using personal vehicles and claiming mileage is a pretty commonly accepted practice in the municipal world. The, I, my understanding is, and the CEO can correct me, but I believe our, our recent advice is, is, had not, has not worn us against doing that.
If I, through your worship to Councilor Johnson, that, that's absolutely true. It's a lot cheaper to pay $150 a month to somebody to travel. And most of our staff do not travel substantially, so it's much cheaper and more beneficial for, to pay either mileage as an allowance or as a captured per, per kilometer rate on a monthly basis.
Anything further from council? If not, you do have a recommendation to note and receive the Infrastructure Services presentation entitled 2022 Fleet Rationalization. Councilor McCormack, Deputy Mayor Kaiser. If there are no further comments or questions, all in favor of the motion. Motion is carried. Thank you. 10.6 Infrastructure Services Waste Disposal Sites, 2021 Annual Monitoring Reports. Oh, so. Yeah, Magic, there, there she is. Hi, Christie. I was looking around the room for you. I forget that you're in another room. Please go ahead with any comments, and then we can be ready for questions. Thanks, Christie.
So you have the reports before you, but there are just a few key points that I thought maybe should be noted in the meeting. Based on the recent survey, that's the South Fred first waste disposal site, it's expected that the landfill portion of the site has a remaining capacity of approximately 40 years. I just would like to note that the timeline could be altered depending if we were to ever see negative trends for surface water or groundwater results. The ministry may, may look to close that earlier than the 40 years, but we're doing what we can to try to prolong the life of that site. And in total, over 115 tons of recyclables were transferred from the site, from both sites, the totals, in 2021. And just last year, the South Fred site saw over 5,400 vehicles through there, and the Roblin site saw just over 2,100 vehicles through the site. And I'm available for any questions.
Council, questions directed to Christie on her report? Seeing none? Deputy Mayor Kaiser says it's exciting. I, I know it's something that we have to do on, on a yearly basis. I, I really would have thought that, that COVID and the great amounts of, of stuff that we took in, both, especially South Fred, would have affected our lifetime. But you're right, if, if we look after it and do it right, then we'll have the use of it for quite some time. You do have a recommendation before you to receive for information, the monitoring and report, moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Councilor Penau. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you, Christie. Bylaws. We only have two tonight, so I'll do them separately. Bylaw number 2022-0042 to amend zoning bylaw 02-22 as amended, P L Z A C O 2022-033, for second and third reading. Councilor Penau, Councilor Richardson, comments or questions? Yes, you have a question? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Bylaw number 2022-0043, to appoint tile drainage inspectors, for second and finally a third time. Councilor McCormack, Deputy Mayor Kaiser, comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Any new business? Councilor Norrie.
Thank you, your worship. This is coming from some, excuse me, some calls and emails I've had, and I'm just have a resolution that staff investigate the feasibility of a chicken bylaw similar to that of Kingston's and report back in the August staff meeting of the feasibility of this. I could explain further what a chicken bylaw is if you wish.
I, I think it's not playing chicken on the roads, is it? Any questions? So, so you're putting forth a motion that staff, and, and can we do that within, within new business if we all agree to it?
If you have two-thirds of council support.
So if I had two-thirds of council support, could we ask that a report come forward on a bylaw concerning the use of having chickens throughout the municipality? I don't know what the bylaw is for, for outside. I know there are lots of chickens. Are you talking about a particular area we need to?
No, Kingston's is general. There's a limited number. You got to talk to neighbors and so on. It's, it's, it's pretty good bylaw. If, if us, our town agrees to it, it's just a company, and it's like that would have brought forward to the public and hear and decide, it would be decided, that's all.
Okay. But, but go ahead, go ahead, please.
Through your worship, our department does also get a number of calls about chickens, so I, I know what this is about. Currently, it's regulated in our zoning bylaws that you can only keep livestock animals, which includes chickens, on a property that is zoned for rural uses or agricultural uses. So there are certain properties, particularly near the urban fringe area, that think based on the size, they should be allowed to have chickens, but they aren't. There's also a growing trend to allow urban chickens as a sort of food security initiative. These are very polarizing often, so staff would be recommending we begin this with a community consultation to find out what residents here want. But I do agree, Kingston does have a very clear bylaw where they lay out their licensing for urban chickens.
Okay. So I, I think our, our clerk has laid out what, what they will look into. That would be sufficient, Councilor Norrie, for your motion?
Yes, that's great. I'll bang your table. That, that's fantastic. Thank you.
And seconded by Councilor McCormack, all in favor of that. Oh, sorry, you wish to speak to it?
Just Councilor Norrie, is this for both sides of the road?
Ouch. Ouch is right. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Any other new business? Any notices of motion? Any statements by members? Councilor Penau.
Thank you, worship. This should not come to any surprise to anybody here. But as you're aware, recently, there was a provincial election, and not only was our town brightened by election signs, but the county of Lennox and Huntington was as well. I witnessed two political opponents share one sign location by using two four-by-four posts dug into the ground at the corner of Richmond and Center Street, and then their two signs were attached to, to this structure, thus making it more of a permanent sign than a temporary one. This was allowed. I find it appalling that there's a bylaw in place from the county of Lennox and Huntington that the federal and provincial governments are permitted to install election signs, as, as we've seen, while we candidates that are running for municipal elections are not allowed to install any signs in the same locations as we just witnessed from the provincial elections. It is understood that the federal and provincial governments provide funding to the county, and the county will allow them to do as they wish. But when it comes to us, the mayor, the deputy mayor, and the councillors of the largest municipality in the county of Lennox and Huntington are simply denied the right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Go ahead, Dan. And then I'll go to you, Councilor Norrie. Go ahead, Councilor McCormack.
Thank you, worship, on a more serious note, if Christie Kelly's still with us.
I'm sorry, was that a serious note for me?
No, no, for what I said earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay.
Maybe we could talk about the recent lack of service from waste management. The, we had a lot of complaints, delays and whatnot, and if Christie's still available, we could just get a bit of an update as to what occurred and if we have any, I'm sure the residents that are listening in would like to know, we have any, any information on that.
Christie, would you, would you like to comment on that, please, if, if you can? And I know that you don't maybe relate directly to it as far as lack of service, but if you would like to make a statement, fine. And if not, if, if we could ask maybe for a report to come forward for maybe the next council meeting, because I know that it's something that we're all getting calls on. But Christie, I'll go, I'll let you go ahead, please.
Yes, I can provide a, a quick update. So as you're aware, the last few weeks, our contractor has been experiencing some unforeseen labor issues. They're working and will continue to work diligently to train some alternate staff for the route. They've also indicated that there have been a few equipment breakdowns. And while they're often small in scale, they, the repairs do take time to get them back on the route and, and ultimately cause some delays. So we are working with the contractor and will continue to work with them to ensure communications are, are there, and we're proactively working to ensure that the delays are not ongoing. We, I just would like to note that our staff have been utilizing the new Boyan alert system to notify residents in the specific areas that, that these delays are occurring. So any additional information, whether it'll be collected the following morning, we are, we are, we are putting it out there and obviously would encourage residents to sign up for that to get, ensure that they're notified and, and get the proper information. But I guess we've just, lastly, we should note that if your entire area is not collected before nightfall, But I guess we just, lastly, we should note that if your entire area is not collected before nightfall, it is likely that it's for, you know, some kind of unforeseen circumstance, some kind of delay. And we would like to remind the residents to ensure that they have their materials back out to the curb by 7:00 a.m. the following day, because the contractor always does follow-up or continue their day where they left off before nightfall. But again, we are working with them and hope to ensure that these delays aren't ongoing and to get service back to where it should be.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly.
There was a big pickleball tournament at the old arena. And mentioned from a couple people that played, they couldn't see that there was a defibrillator available in the building. So I'm just putting that out. I don't know if there is one or not. But it might be something to look into if there isn't one, seeing that a lot of the players are in my age group.
That's actually very good. I believe that there had been when it was used as a hockey arena. It was probably one of the ones. But that's a good thing for us to look into and perhaps suggest for the fair board, who are the owners of it, and see if we can help them procure one. That's a very good suggestion. Any other statements by members? Oh, sorry, sorry, Counselor Norrie. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. For those that aren't aware, I think we'll see there are Richmond Park Boulevard, North End, by the trees. We have a bit of a tent city happening there. There's needles, there's spider pit. There was emergency service that had to call Sunday. I believe it was an overdose. I'm not sure. Plus, I'm concerned with the people living there, texting that if they don't get treatment. But I've been told by staff it's private property. So can we, I got two folds here. Can someone in staff that knows the owners, I think they're on Toronto or Brampton, call them, see what their feelings of this is? I mean, we have taxies dropping people off, pizza boxes walking in there. So it's, and I've got some pictures, quite interesting pictures of people living there, which I agree people need places to live, and I don't want to sound heavy-handed. But can we maybe just talk to the owners, someone can, and see what their feelings are? And the second part is a huge brush at the fairground. People have seen climbing in there and smoke coming out while they're sleeping in it. Concern, of course, is injury, death. And I understand the fair board can't afford to get rid of that. So maybe someone could talk to the fair board and maybe a volunteer group work out to clear it out. I don't know. Again, fear of needles and that. But if they could just reach out to those two groups, and maybe we can formulate a plan from that. That's just my concern, and a lot of citizens in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, and I see that RCA O is taking notes on that. And the next thing that we only need to put up, and I'm in full agreement with you, Counselor Norrie, is to get the neighborhood up there to stop dumping all their yard waste and so on, which has caused those heaps. It's not caused by either the town or the owners of the fair board. It is caused by residents that live in that area. Any other statements by members? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to section 239 of the municipal act in order to discuss the prospective acquisition or disposition of land and also matter related to personal information about identifiable individuals. Counselor Panal, Counselor McCormack, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you and welcome back coming out of closed session. I will look for a motion to rise and report and adopt all -- okay. Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Council, Council McCormack. In the special -- in the special closed session on May 31, council participated in the training session with senior management on topics of meeting procedures and strategic plans. In the closed session on June 14, council approved the closed session minutes of April 26, May 3, and May 31, and received information regarding a potential acquisition of land and gave direction to staff. Have we voted on that? No, sorry. So then I go to the next resolution. I'm looking for a resolution -- oh, sorry. And we also received information on matters related to an identifiable individual and gave staff direction. Okay, so the next one I will be looking for a resolution for the following, please. That council endorsed the proposal presented by the CAO in closed session this evening regarding the acquisition of 99 Advance Avenue as an administration building. And further that council direct the clerk to draft a bylaw for council's consideration on June 28 to authorize the purchase of 99 Advance Avenue for a total of 5.8 building -- sorry, 5.8 million for the building and contents and move costs. And further that council direct staff to bring a more fulsome report to the public meeting on June 28 outlining financing options and other considerations. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Council McCormack, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Greater Napanee for this evening's meeting, first, second, and third meetings. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Council Pennell, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Motion for adjournment. Council McCormack, Council Pennell, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Good night everyone. Thanks very much.